Speaker to come by. From multiple people, thank you. The board president will determine to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker and on an individual basis also has the discretion to allow extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. While you are speaking, uh, keep in mind that the light at the lectern will turn yellow when there is one minute left. When your time has elapsed, the light at the lectern will turn red and you will hear beeping. If you are still speaking, please finish your sentence, but try not to speak beyond the allotted time. Thank you. Uh, voy a proporcionar un breve resumen sobre esta junta después de unos comentarios, después de unos procedimientos preliminares. Media hora será dedicada a comentarios público. Luego habrá oportunidad para escuchar comentarios de parte de comités y uniones distritales seguidos por comentarios de parte de la mesa directiva y de la superintendente. Al final de la junta hay una última oportunidad para quienes no pudieron participar durante la primera, la primera llamada. Uh, pueden quedarse hasta el final de la junta para poder hacerlo. Las tarjetas verdes recibidas para comentario público serán organizadas por tema. La presidenta alternará las tarjetas a través de los varios artículos en la agenda para asegurar, asegurar poder escuchar por lo menos una persona de cada tema. Usualmente también ella llamará a los estudiantes primero. Tome en cuenta que si hay demasiadas tarjetas, no todas serán seleccionadas ya que el periodo de comentario es solamente treinta minutos. Al ser llamado tiene la opción de dar su tiempo a otra persona. Tome en cuenta que solo puede ceder su tiempo a alguien que desea comentar sobre el mismo tema o artículo escrito en su tarjeta. Para ceder su tiempo al ser llamado, favor póngase de pie, diga su nombre e indique a quién desea ceder su tiempo. Al ceder su tiempo pasa la oportunidad para proveer comentarios y nadie más puede concederle su tiempo a usted. La presidenta determinará, uh, otorgará uno, dos o tres minutos por orador y tiene, tiene, tiene la discreción de otorgar minutos adicionales a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adaptación especial. Durante su comentario se dará cuenta que la luz en la altriz se volverá amarilla cuando falte solo un minuto. Cuando se haya acabado su tiempo, la luz se volverá roja y escuchará un sonido. Favor de tratar de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Uh, ya que pedimos es, ya que entendemos que hay diferentes cuestiones que son de importancia para diferentes personas y pedimos que respete el tiempo otorgado de manera que podamos escuchar a la mayoría del público. Muchas gracias.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our first school board meeting of the 2023, 2024 school year. Let's give ourselves a round of applause. Um, Ms. Tyra, can you call the role? Welcome back, by the way. Student Director Caitlin Lau.
Present.
Student Director Janai Dell.
Present.
Welcome. Director. Hadia Brown.
Present.
Director, uh, Mike Chang is excused this evening. Director Jennifer Shnawski.
Here.
Vice President Ana Basudev.
Present.
And President Laura Babbitt. Here. Thank you so much. Now I'd like to call for a motion to approve our agenda for this evening. Is there someone who will move to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second, second? Thank you. It's been moved by Director Brown and seconded by Vice President Basudev. All in favor say aye.
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 Are you saying aye? Okay, so that means there are no, uh, no's and no abstentions, so we have approved the agenda in uh unanimously. Now we will move towards our first opportunity for public comment. Um, just to clarify that today we're going to have two sections for public comment. The first being around any issue not related to the Oxford Street property. And then we're going to have a dedicated time just for the Oxford Street property. And that's because I really wanted to, uh, make sure that we're using this time to hear from the community. We heard you very loud and clear last year that although we had a seven eleven committee, there are still various committee members who felt like they weren't aware, uh, community members who felt like they weren't aware and didn't have an opportunity to be heard. So we're doing, uh, twenty minutes specifically to Oxford Street. So I'm going to ask that you hold during this first, um, opportunity and wait for that second opportunity so that the thirty minutes can be for anyone who wants to address any topic on tonight's agenda or within our school district. Uh, as with my normal practice, I do start with those who are physically here in person and then I go to those who are online. And I also try to start with students. Um, I can't quite tell who's whom, but it looks like we're going to have enough time for everyone who submitted a card. If, especially if we use two minutes as our gauge. Um. Uh, that being the case, I will start with Mr. Adam Nah, Nafafun Kelwan. I'm sorry. I should know how to pronounce your name by now. I apologize. President. I'm gonna do two minutes.
My good. Oh, I wanna, I wanna first want to get up here and I want to thank all of you, um, for the service, the work that you've done. Uh, I just, as many of you probably remember, I have a, um, a now graduate of the Berkeley schools that went through, uh, every single grade through here. And I'm thrilled that he's going to be sent off, we're sending him off next week, uh, to take a gap year program and then hopefully come back and start higher ed someplace. So I want to thank you for educating our kids, for overseeing and supporting the staff and, uh, and the teachers. I wanna, I'm here, as you can probably imagine, we came several times last year advocating for the need for graduation for Berkeley High to not be on the Jewish Sabbath. We were here for many meetings. We asked for a change. That change did not happen. I heard many reports back from the, from school board members that there wasn't enough time, that we didn't know about this. Things were set in motion. I am here today at the very first school board meeting, asking you to make sure that the Jewish community in the Berkeley Unified School District is seen and is heard and that graduation for Berkeley High or any of the schools does not happen on the Jewish Sabbath. I ask you for making that commitment. I have already, my wife and I have already emailed the prince, the new interim principal at Berkeley High. So we don't get into a place of saying, I didn't know at this point. We've already emailed the superintendent. We have yet to hear a response or commitment that this will not be on the Jewish Sabbath. I am here today to ask all of you to make a commitment that this graduation for this upcoming class and in future years will not be on the Jewish Sabbath. I thank you for all that you're doing and hopefully I can get your commitment.
Monica Jones. Followed by, uh, Joseph Colton. Followed by Rodrick Caraway.
Good evening. My name is Monica Jones and I'm here for two reasons. Um, I'm the grandparent of two junior jackets at Berkeley High School. And we practice at Berkeley High School and I wanted to ask, uh, is there any way that the school district can get us, can get the lights turned on? Because it's getting really dark out there. Our practice is from seven to eight thirty. And at eight o'clock it starts getting dark and by the time we're leaving there, I can't even see my kid with my glasses on. So that's one issue. And then I wanted to thank the, um, superintendent because I reached out to her, um, about an event that was going on supporting the, uh, football team and she responded quickly and I appreciate that because that doesn't always happen when you, when you're reaching out to administrators. I appreciate that. And then I want to personally thank Jennifer. She and, um, uh, Terry Taplin, Kate Harrison and some others came out to support the event on August fifth for the, uh, junior jackets and then they did a fundraiser. So we really appreciate that. And I would have brought my junior jackets with me, but they're at practice today. But you know, I would have brought them here to, uh, thank you as well. My second item is regarding, um, I, I'm a parent at Malcolm X and, um, I started a program called the Lunch with Dads. And it's for kids, cause I'm raising two young black males and they, I'm a single parent. And so I wanted to have males come in and speak to them and just pour into them some basic life skill stuff. Just simple stuff like how to change attire, how to work with tools, different things like that. So I have different speakers come in and so, um, I was asking, I don't know if the proper title is parent liaison, but the parent advocate liaison that's at the campus. I was asking her about the, uh, makeup of black males in the school district. I don't have the demographics, but we need a black male at that facility, uh, at Malcolm X specifically. I don't know what's going on at the other schools. I'm just dealing with Malcolm X right now. And we need a black male over there. I would love to have someone that I could partner with to help these boys. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caraway, are you? Followed by Joseph Colton. And then Patrick Campbell, if you could just line up and immediately follow each other.
Uh, hello, uh, welcome back. It's good to see everybody back, praying that this be a good school year. I don't want to take up too much of my time. I'm here to talk about, uh, an issue that is very troubling to us. Uh, me and my fellow coworkers in the maintenance department are physically located in Richmond now. So we've had, uh, an additional eighteen miles added to our commute. We have to drive all the way out to Harbor Way in Richmond. So I just did some simple math to give you an ideal to kind of comprehend. Eighteen miles at, uh, two hundred and forty-two working days is forty-three hundred and fifty-six miles, which is equivalent to driving from downtown Berkeley to New York and back to New Orleans. And so we're have, uh, accumulate, we're, we're getting this additional cost. And up until June, we were getting mileage at sixty-two cents per mile. Uh, we've had, uh, I'll actually really use that check for mileage to pay for my gas the end of the month. Because my commute went from thirty-six miles to fifty-five miles per day. And then now we're in traffic, you know, we, I have to go through Interstate eighty. So we're here to see if we could, uh, just get some, it, it sort of feels, uh, I don't want to say disrespectful, but that we're not really being paid attention to. Uh, we, I actually had a couple of coworkers that were on public transportation and they had to purchase vehicles. So now we got one guy with the car note. We were near Ashby Bart. So they were able to walk. And there's no Bart service out there. It's a very seedy, terrible neighborhood, dangerous. I'm quite sure you see it on the news. Okay. I'm done, but, uh, thank you for your time. I want to invite you all to come out physically to Harbor Way. So you can physically see where we are.
Uh, thank you. Hello and good evening. I'm here tonight to ask the board to please extend the stipend the district was paying until June thirtieth this year. The stipend was for the workers who are required to drive the additional as Robert Caraway said earlier, the eighteen miles and two hundred, uh, eighteen miles a day for two hundred and forty-two days every year. This four thousand three hundred and fifty-six miles a year is quite frankly a burden on a lot of our workers here. I have a Honda Civic. It is the by far best gas mileage car on the yard. For me, this is eleven tanks a year. Might not sound a lot, but at five dollars a gallon, that's five hundred and fifty dollars. Suddenly we're starting to talk about a lot of money adding up and that's not including the currently sixty-three, whoa, sixty-five dollars or sixty-five cents a mile that the IRS says we are owed per mile that is required additional of our own vehicles. Your workers are now not only having to take on this extra financial burden, but extra burden for what we might have to do for our own vehicles. Not everyone can just pay for a mechanic. We all sometimes have to do it ourselves. We have already since the summer of twenty twenty-two had two people leave maintenance, both of them citing the pay cut that we are now experiencing because of this as part of the reason for their leaving. In addition to additional pay in other words, in other places. These are hard positions to fill as we can see with just how long some of these positions have been open already. We have members here who have been here for ten, twenty, and some even thirty years. These people have made sure the district has stayed maintained through hardships like the pandemic, for climate change, for the housing crash and even the stock market crash. These are people who want to work for you and they want to work for the citizens of Berkeley. But quite frankly, it's just impossible, especially with these rising costs. So again, I ask the board, please to establish a small budget allotment for these continued travel expenses as long as we continue to be asked to transport, to transport ourselves to the new and temporary location. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Patrick Campbell. Um, I actually want to come to you guys to say that, like my fellow associates, I'm one of those people that have had to struggle with this change and no mileage. Um, I'm one of the ones who had to buy a car. Continue, you know, discontinue public transportation and that was a pain. Walking every day and taking public transportation was the easiest part to get back and forth, but I'm here today to say that continuing this will help us get back and forth to work. Because as they say, we can't do our job if we can't get there. It's already five dollars a gallon. And have to continue to pay out of pocket like we're doing now, it makes matters a lot worse. Uh, we can't afford, you know, we can't afford to take out that payment, but that's extra wear and tear, that's extra pennies that's coming out of pocket, that's extra things we have to do. And more that we have to worry about distress add-ons to our day on top of our already workload. So to say more as into it, um, I feel that would be better if we had that continuation of this stipend so that we can continue to do and provide for you guys as we provide for ourselves in the job that we are doing and holding accountable for. I thank you for letting me speak. If there's any more to say, I'm sure it will be brought up.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for coming. I believe that was all for that group that I had cards for. And I don't see anyone else physically here to speak on a matter other than Oxford. Um, can I ask people to lower their hands online? If you are wanting to comment on Oxford, please lower your hands and only have your ra, hand raised online if you want to speak about a topic exclusive to Oxford, so excluding Oxford. I think I see people raising their hands because of Oxford now that I said that. Um, I'm gonna call on Moni Law online. Can we please promote her? And again, if your hand is raised now for Oxford, please lower it. Uh, you're on mute, uh, Moni. You're still on mute. Can we unmute her?
Okay, you unmuted me. Thank you very much. Um, thank you, board and members of, and president of the school board. I apologize. I'm at a hospital in Los Angeles with my sister, so I'm not there in person. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I briefly wanted to speak to a letter that I sent to the board members, also the youth that worked on the project. I had the honor and privilege to mentor them through the process, which they led incredible work to create the first of its kind guide to mental health resources for Berkeley youth. And it includes a list of resources available as well as, um, some tips and advice for teachers and family members of youth who may be facing a mental health crisis or concerns. And it all arose out of the death of their friend by suicide on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, um, which I unfortunately sadly witnessed his body in the street. And I wanted to make sure that every family of Berkeley High, that was the intention, would receive a copy of the guide. You should have it in your inbox and I wanted it to be a matter of record. There's a copy in Spanish and English, um, that the hope by these young people was to include a copy to every family at the very fall season last year. So the city council, from their proposal, the students prepared this three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar budget to provide additional resources for mental health as a, um, urgent priority for that school year following the suicide. I don't think anything occurred yet. I understand it's a wellness center and formation and I thank Dr. Warhus for, for informing us of that, but we're, they're curious as to what has happened with the three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. What was done other than dogs and therapy animals, I think, were brought on campus. Was there any additional mental health service support available? And, uh, suicide prevention and other work that could be done. Um, so it's an urgent matter. It continues to be a concern and I really, really strongly encourage you to, um, provide any kind of support you can to the funding for the guide being printed for the school, for all students and student organizations and family members who would be in need of, uh, this guide. It's in high demand and high need. Thank you so much. Thank you, uh, Ms. Madam President.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming even from the hospital and we're sending you all good thoughts.
Thank you.
Um, next I will call on Rafael Kubela. Followed by Mark Joseph Rama. And that will close our public comment period for all other issues exclusive of Oxford.
Hello, board. Thank you. Uh, my name is Rafael Kubela. I'm a parent of a child at Sylvia Mendez. My wife and I moved to the city of Berkeley in order to attend the school Sylvia Mendez. Um, it is the only school with Spanish immersion programs in the city of Berkeley and for that we thank you for having such a wonderful school with such a wonderful community and keeping it up and, uh, and it's really exactly what we wanted. Unfortunately, during COVID, we were not able to have our child attend school as a kindergartner. And, um, that was a tough year for us, for our, our community and it was a blow to us. Um, and everyone actually. So when we were informed that our school was going to go through a renovation and that our children may potentially not have a schoolyard, not have a, um, library, may be subject to and, um, unfortunately be vulnerable to, um, dust and particulates and, and noise, um, by having their school, um, renovated while they're still on the grounds. We started asking ourselves what the history was, uh, and, and what the process was to getting, um, the school renovations underway. I received a letter recently and I'd like to just read from it. Says the facilities department engaged in surrounding school districts to find and fight, to try to find a suitable space that Berkeley Unified School District could rent for the construction period of Sylvia Mendez. The plan was for another campus outside of Berkeley to possibly be used for B U S C to provide contact, uh, contract bus services for students. After constant collaborations with other districts, no other spaces have been located. While suitable locations had been identified in Oakland for schools that were tentatively scheduled to be closed, the O U S C had recently made the decision to keep the schools open. Additionally, it is important to note that suitable spaces include only a school site that has been built under the requirements set forth by the D S A. The D S A has jurisdiction over access compliance requirements for all bills.
Kubela.
Sorry, yes. I, I'd just like to quickly mention that.
I'm sorry, your, your time is up, but you could.
Really good. The D S A does not only, um.
We, we actually have read that as board members. We've seen that communication, so I'm not sure what your final point is for that. But you're welcome to email that to us at boardevent@berkeley.net.
Thank you. They're bullet points. I will forward.
Two, two minutes, so you've gone over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Joseph. Mark Joseph.
Greetings to everybody at the school board meeting. Mark Ramia here, instructional assistant, special education at Berkeley High School. I've gotten no response from Superintendent Nikita Portmorel for my June first, twenty twenty-three request for a second administrative review CBA seven point five point two for a poor evaluation given by my supervisor. On August eighth, twenty twenty-three, I again submitted the same request and Nikita gave no response. Last year, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, it was explained to me by my special education program supervisor that it did not need to see even one I E P in a class in which were more than ten students with special needs since, as she claimed, I was not working one-on-one with any of them. Yet the schedule for my special education program supervisors stated that I was to relieve other adults, B U S D I As and contractual I A employees for their breaks in that specific physical education class. This topic partly contributed to my poor last year's evaluation given by my special education program supervisor who considered me inquiring about such I E P issues as challenging authority. Special educations, I A is not having access to students' special education I E Ps before they work with students with special needs puts students' health in jeopardy. Awareness of specific health conditions, for instance, like diabetes and other important ones. There are behavior concerns, trauma, both psychologically and physically, allergies to foods and substances, some of which may require, for instance, use of an EpiPen. In all the years I've worked in B U S T, I've heard from program managers, supervisors and teachers that yes, we need to know about students' I E Ps before we work for them. This year, just yesterday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-third, was the first time I and other I A saw some of the C L C students with special needs I E Ps since we started working with them on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move towards our first in-person people for Oxford. I have, um, Georgia Malawasla. Uh, thank you so much, followed by Eileen M. Killery. Followed by Gail Lake. Uh, and last but not least, followed by Richard Sauer.
Two minutes for this as well? Two minutes?
Um, yes, because we have several people online.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Um, since nineteen seventy-eight, I've lived across the street from the lower playground at Oxford School. And over the last few years, I've been a very fortunate recipient of great communication from a lot of B U S D staff, especially John Kalise and Carol Pacheco. When we were here in March, my neighbors and I were requesting more of that kind of communication so that people who had not been as fortunate as I was could feel informed and heard. And I want to just especially thank Director Jennifer Shnawski. And I hope I said that right with a name like Maslowski. Um, who's been wonderful over the past few meetings, making sure that we know when this issue is on the, is on the agenda and who's invited us to speak with her. So I really thank you for that. And I don't know who's responsible, but someone has been sending out very informative emails from Berkeley Public Schools and we appreciate that as well. I just want to remind, ask you again, as you move forward to making a final decision, to please continue to work with our neighborhood, our community. I know it's not our decision about what's going to happen, but we appreciate being informed. We appreciate being heard that you take our input. Um, one last request is, obviously I'm biased, but I feel like the situation, the, the configuration of the is, obviously I'm biased, but I feel like the situation, the configuration of the school in our neighborhood is not particularly typical. There are a lot of schools that are on busy streets. The way this school is configured in our neighborhood, it can feel like the school is literally in our houses and on our front yards. The greater neighborhood is certainly going to be significantly impacted by traffic, parking, noise, et cetera. So I want to ask again, if you have not ever visited the site of the old Oxford property, please do so. I would really appreciate that, so you can see what we're dealing with. And finally, to please work with us as a team, so that we can come up with the decisions that work for the district and also for the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Eileen Killery, followed by Gail Lake, and then Richard Sauer, if you could just come immediately in that order. That would let us hear from more people faster.
Hello, good evening, School Board members. I'd like to point out that you list five options for the Oxford site. I want you to consider a sixth, not listed, but a likely scenario. First, you put the property on the market. Developers shy away from considering such a geotectonically problematic site, subject to sequoia challenges. The site, the school, remains vacant, just like Alameda's Lum Elementary School, now five years since its closure for geotectonic reasons as well. Then you engage in a catch-as-catch-can leasing of the school, like the 29 years experienced by the Hillside School. Eventually, the school is demolished, like its geotectonic twin just down the way, the site of the El Cerrito Middle School, without a ready but arguably unrealistic sale of what can only be called a white elephant site. The sixth option or scenario emerges. One, the neighborhood is already experiencing a vacant, empty school, subject to incursions with an uncertain future. The School Board needs to act as a responsible public property owner. Consider thoroughly all of the options. Sale is not necessarily going to, the market is not going to come through necessarily. The appraisal is not for comparable sites, okay? The three public schools I mentioned are the comparable sites that were not included in the 7-11 Committee. The neighborhood, we want you to thoroughly consider all these options, that, the five options, and inform the neighborhood of choices that reflect long-term commitment to the city residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Lake?
Hi, I didn't really know that I wanted to speak with everyone, but I am pretty confused as to where we stand and what is happening. I have heard that the site is unsafe, but that the building has been reinforced. My house has been standing for 100 years, and that really part of what's going on is that if there was an emergency, the parents could not get to the school, and that in itself is a reason that the school should be closed. I certainly don't want to live through the school being demolished. You know, 10 years ago, the school was fixed. We had an elevator put in. The school was made to be useful for the neighborhood, for the kids that used it. You have a school, you know, the Spanish school, that obviously the immersion program needs another school. I don't think it's as large as Oxford School. Why couldn't something like Oxford be used for that? In my fantasy, I would very much like to see the school become a recreation center for the neighborhood. People really need a place to go, and being able to make an art center, maybe we pay a monthly fee. You know, we realize that it costs a lot of money to keep it going, but the way it's standing right now, the school is being totally neglected, it's been broken into. I just recently had glass appear all over my backyard. All the side windows on the south side have been vandalized. Everyone is having to put wood up on it. The alarm system was on for three days. I was calling the school district to say the doors are wide open, and I was getting no response. And so originally, when you wanted us, you know, to know what was happening at Oxford, they posted the messages for us in an Alameda newspaper. They posted the signs on the doors of the school, which nobody goes near. It would be nice if we could have better communication and you be able to talk to each other. That would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. I'm Richard Sauer. I live around the corner from the Oxford School, and our son lives directly across the street from it on Oxford, so he's on the approach path if it ever decides to migrate down the hill. So we have considerable interest in the, in the property. I understand why the School Board wishes to offer it for sale, and I don't oppose that in any way. I would like to encourage as much visibility into the process as possible. For example, what kind of standards or criteria are going to be imposed or advertised on potential bidders for it, including favored or disfavored uses, standards for construction, how seismic issues are expected to be addressed. I'm sure that there will be some kind of guidance given to prospective bidders. Secondly, if a sale cannot, it cannot occur immediately, what sort of measures will be taken to secure the property, make it available for temporary uses, that kind of thing? And finally, if it turns out that there is no successful bid for the property, what happens then? What kind of fallback plan is there? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now I will move towards our online participants, starting with Deep Mar Lorenz, followed by Merrill Siegel. Also, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on the Oxford issue at this time.
Good evening, members of the Board. I was Vice Chair of the 7-11 Committee, and in that role, supported the surplus declaration. Can you hear me, just to make sure?
Yes, thank you.
The surplus declaration, however, my recommendation, as well as another committee member, was to explore workforce housing on the site. And this was after a careful study of all the reports, and I would like to echo what previous commenter said about, you know, this assessment that the, the, one of the keys to declare surplus, meaning no longer using the site for education, for students on site, is the evacuation scenario after a disaster, and that the buildings generally have been assessed to be sound. And, you know, I, as an architect, I would kind of want to have a much closer look as at the viability. Certainly, it's not the easiest site to build on, but it's not impossible. And as somebody else mentioned, the site is surrounded by 100-year-old houses, many on rickety foundations and steeper soil conditions. So if you build new construction or improve what's there and maybe add something to it, this would probably be safer than anything around it. And from the evacuation perspective, this is a site that has road access, street access from two sides, plus a path, and it's also at the peripheral area of the entire slalom zone. So, so I think would certainly keep an open mind and explore that further. And, you know, maybe the overarching argument in all of this, this site has been a school, public property for a century, and it has served the city well. And I think it's about stewardship and not kind of say, well, it's a difficult thing that somebody else deal with it. And then these scenarios, what happens after five, 10 years, disrepair, vandalism, all of this. No, you need to step up and take good stewardship and see what can you do to the site that serves the community. And I would urge you to make this a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we don't have the timer reflecting on the screen for you all. So if you do hear me say thank you, that does mean, please just finish your sentence. Ms. Siegel?
Hi, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I agree with what Deep Mar just said, that it would be great to have this current site as workforce housing, but while that's taking place, because it's going to take a while to get all the plans into shape and to know really how to deal with the, the issues of the landslide and such, it would be great if the current site can be leased out, as in Berkeley's Horizon Transitional Village. The site is access point to four bus lines and to the heavily resourced area of North Berkeley. It would be, if you remember, Horizon Transitional Village was considered a quote-unquote enormous success by Robbie Mantoya, the director of Dorothy Day House. This would be a wonderful way as a temporary use, as we just heard, there are broken windows and such, if that can be used and fixed up temporarily for a homeless shelter and services site. This would provide equity and beauty for the city's neediest individuals. I know people up in this district really care about that, and providing beauty for those who are transitioning from homelessness is a wonderful gift. So that's all I have to say, that we need to keep it public, and I hope we can start by transitioning to maybe homeless housing for a year until the plans are all set for robust workforce housing, especially for teachers in Berkeley. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sharon Friedman? And I thought I saw Phyllis.
President Babett, I promoted Phyllis first.
Oh, okay, there you go. So Phyllis Orwick, followed by Sharon Friedman.
Thank you, President Babett, and thank you for taking the time to revisit this subject. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. A couple of things I want to point out in your decision-making process, as no criticism, but there's one statement that was the site would need to be rezoned to allow for affordable housing. Well, no, that's not accurate if BUSD retains the land and develops workforce housing under AB 2295, which comes into effect January 1 of 2024. And that would allow at least 40 units, 30 per acre by right and without zoning. And it, 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 it's part of our whole state's effort to try to find, where can we find places where people can live, who teach, who are sanitation workers, who, the people that run our cities, where can they live? And this is an ideal spot for that. So if that's all I ask you to consider, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman, we will receive you now.
Thank you very much. See if that's working. Yes, it's working. Okay. I really appreciate your setting aside some Oxford time specifically. That's really appreciated as a member of a community, and so that it also allows other issues of the community to be heard by the Board. I wanted to speak to the issue of what's going on just as on the site right now, as decisions are being made, and just to echo what, what some others have said. The site is looking kind of rundown. Those of us who walk by, and it is, there's a lot of foot traffic because of the path and being surrounded on two sides, lots of people passing by. There's trash accumulation, there are, there is, there are overgrown weeds, there are sometimes some dumped things and overturned things in the schoolyard, and what, and we heard from Gail that, you know, when alarms are going off, when glass is being broken, how, who do we communicate with? Is there a flow chart of who to call when there's issues going on, things about Oxford School, and what, is there a maintenance schedule at all? Do you have anybody from buildings and grounds and maintenance coming by, and is there, you know, is this scheduled? Do we know, oh, that might be able to be taken care of when they do their monthly visit or what have you? So just as far as the community, making sure that, that it, that it, you know, is safe-looking, but also kept at least on the outside, if we know what those states are, who those people are, that we can become partners in, in just keeping the site safe and well-maintained as best as possible while no one's in it. So any information that can come from the Board or from district maintenance to the community about who we should contact, what should be the order of contacting people so that we can be in communication, we see things and hear things first before the school district finds out about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more hands, I will wait another 30 seconds, because we do have six more minutes. If there are no more callers online, we will move forward with our agenda. Thank you all for coming out and for allowing us this opportunity to hear from you. We need to get our report out from closed session, so at this time I will ask Vice President Vasadev.
Yeah, thank you, President Babett. Closed session was called to order at 5:38 PM. President Babett, Vice President Vasadev, Director Shonoski were present. Director Chang has an excuse absence, and Director Brown joined at 5:50 PM. For case 3.1.1, was moved by Director Shonoski, seconded by President Babett. All Board Directors who were present voted in favor. Case 3.1.2 was moved by Vice President Vasadev, seconded by Director Brown. All Directors who were present voted in favor. Case number 3.1.3 was moved by President Babett, seconded by Director Shonoski. All Directors present voted in favor. Item 3.1.4, Board discussed and provided direction. Item 3.2, Board discussed and provided direction. Item 3.3 included two cases. The first case was moved by President Babett, seconded by Vice President Vasadev, Director Shonoski. It was voted in favor. Both Director Chang and Director Brown were in absentia. Case two, Board discussed and provided direction. And item 3.4 was not discussed. And that concludes the report from closed session.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We will now move towards our committee comments. I don't have any cards for anyone here on committee, but I do see a hand raised. Is there anyone here from the Budget Advisory Committee, Audit Committee, our G-Shack Committee, AASC, D-LAC, PAC, CTE, or PTA Council? Or if you're online, please raise your hand at this time. I see Emily Palos online. We will receive you now.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to give a quick shout out to thank you all for approving the second counselor at the Berkeley Independent Study Program. It's been fantastic having her on board and helping us get a smooth start to the, to the school year. So thank you again for that.
Thank you. We always like a bit of gratitude. We don't get that often. Next, we will move towards union comments. Do we have anyone here on behalf of our unions who would like to speak? Or any videos? Okay, come forward.
Hello. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back from summer. Hope you all had a good summer. Back to the grind, right? So I'm here to speak, I'm Steve Collins with Local 21, and I'm here to speak on an issue that you all discussed in closed session about Clinton Robinson. And I'll be brief, because we sent you all a letter. I think that all of us can agree that this is a very serious issue, right? We can also agree that we're dealing with human beings here. We're dealing with lives and livelihood. All the parties involved in this case deserved a thorough and honest and a timely investigation. Unfortunately, the district failed on all three of those counts in this case. The district must do better in situ- The district must do better in situations like this. Our employees deserve better and our community deserves better. I wanted to take a minute to introduce Clinton Robinson, and I'm going to let him speak once I introduce him. Clint has worked with the district for twelve years. He started off, he's been at the high school his whole career. Started off as a custodian one, moved up to custodian two, and then to custodial supervisor. Um, as a lead, as a custodial two, Clint did all the training for all the employees. He knows them all very well. Um, if you all went out to sites and talked to people that know Clint, they would tell you that Clinton is, is an awesome guy. He's a fair guy. He's a hard worker. And that's all he really cares about when he comes out to work. So I'm going to let Clint speak for a minute.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak for you today. Uh, my name is Clinton Robinson. I'm the custodial supervisor at Berkeley High School. And I have been employed with the district since twenty uh twenty oh nine. During this time, I've been a dedicated employee with no previous discipline actions, always receiving above-average performance evaluations. In your closed session tonight, you received a notice to terminate my employ, employment. I am here this evening, this evening to share with you that the allegations and questions are false and lacking. The way in which this situation had been handled has caused unbelievable amount of stress uh and hardship on me and my family. I have been awaiting uh my due process for over two years with no little contact from the district. As, as, as so what? The timeline would be or when I would even be informed of the findings. As you may have seen in the scaly response provided to you in closed session, most of the allegations have been disproven. In several of the claims, I have witnesses that directly contradict the allegations made by my complainant. The allegations are based on harass, harass-acy along with little or no evidence. In many cases, the allegations are so far from the truth, it is challenging for me even to provide a meaningful response. I have presented a significant amount of evidence that calls into question the credibility of the complainant and the key witnesses, and yet the district is recommending I be terminated. This allegation was brought against me when I began to address poor performance of my subordinates. When I no longer allowed these individuals, individuals to continue to go and come as they please, I was suddenly being accused of inappropriate behavior. This is a organized attack against my character, completely lacking evidence and credibility. The only thing I have ever been guilty of is trying to treat all my staff in fair and equitable manner. I am shocked to see that the district would not call into question the allegations. And importantly, the fact that they are solely based on lies and harass, harass-acy, lacking in witnesses and proof. I urge you to reexamine this case and how your administration has handled it. As I am certain that this is not the line and, and with the law of the values and uh the values of the district that claims to uphold against me.
Thank you. Now we will move toward our board member and superintendent comments. And I would like to start this evening just to first say that I hope that everyone had an excellent summer break. And want to be sure to thank all of those who worked so hard during this summer to support our students. The Bears and Learns for Summer School, the excellent middle school STEM program supported by Berkeley Public Schools Fund, and for the Early Back Intensive Program offered through Step Up Academy. Thank you to all of those who helped support summer's various efforts, from the deep cleaning and maintenance that takes place to the nutrition services team that works to offer meals to every child, to H R, finance and facilities team that work to fill positions, close the books and coordinate all the competing demands of our facilities projects. Please know that all of these functions matter and set the stage for learn. And it sets the stage so that our future can be prepared to live out their destiny. As we launch into the new school year, look to building upon the foundation that we've been working to solidify so that we can reach our shared goals of equity and results. From moving towards improved curricula to robust community engagement, specifically for our modernization present, projects, bail redesign, school site safety, to cutting red tape so that everyone is aware of the resources available and can easily access them, and to ensure that we hire the best team members timely, we have our hands full. I'm so glad to welcome our new student directors to the board, as we certainly will need to hear from you to ensure that we are not only acting based upon the data and adult lived experiences, but are also responding to the student experience in real time and that we live up to responding in a meaningful way. I'm looking forward to tackling all of these challenges ahead as well as we also strive to ensure that BSEP is renewed, that we live up to all of our Black Lives Matter, Latinx, and climate literacy resolutions. We're colleagues. I look forward to our continued work together during our board meetings. And I look forward to hearing updates on the happenings of our assigned subcommittees. And ultimately look forward to seeing all of our email inbox issues continue to decline. I want to wholeheartedly commend the superintendent and her team for these, for the start of this school year as it's been a dramatic improvement from the issues that we faced last year, particularly with our after-school program and enrollment numbers. Finally, I want to encourage all board members to continue the traditions of past boards by hosting office hours so that we can be sure that we are truly hearing from uh, from you and are representing our families' interests through our roles as board directors. For the month of September, my office hours will fall on the fourth Saturday of nine-twenty-three. And thereafter, I will aim to host my office hours on the third Saturday afternoons. Our website will be updated with all of our office hours as we provide the details uh to our board secretary. So please look out for those, to all of those who are watching and listening and wondering when we're going to have our office hours. And also remember that we are always available at boardevent@berkeley.net. Thank you again to all of our students, families, and educators for choosing BUSD. We look forward to serving you and seeing all of the many things that we will accomplish together this school year. Thank you. Vice President Vasadev?
Yeah, thank you, uh, President Babett, for your comments. Echo a lot of your appreciation for our summer school staff. Uh, wanted to thank everybody who came out tonight to our first board meeting of the year. Our Jewish families, Oxford Street neighbors, the Lunch with Dads Club at Malcolm X, which is a fantastic idea, and all of the various comments that we heard. Thank you for being here. I also wanted to take a moment to appreciate the comments from our labor partners tonight. After housing, transportation is the second largest household expenditure, so I really appreciated hearing from our BCC members about their additional transportation expenses and look forward to learning more about that issue. And um, you know, we should be encouraging public transportation whenever we can, so I was heartbroken to hear that somebody had to buy a car to go to work. Um, I also wanted to, you know, thank the Oxford Street neighbors for continuing to ask for better engagement and agree with you that we can do better on community engagement. So please continue to write to us. Um, I know that I, you know, I try to update Councilmember Han whenever I can and vice versa. She also flags issues for me. I wanted to um just give a shout out to our facilities team, because I know that some of the Oxford Street neighbors mentioned the recent vandalism at the site. I'm a neighbor of the old Oxford site. Um, so for me, you know, when I heard complaints really quickly, I know that neighbors and Councilmember Han reached out to Director Kalis and that he and his team at the beginning of the year, when it's such a busy time at all of our sites, responded very quickly. So I just wanted to give um my deep appreciation to our facility staff. I think it took no less than twenty-four hours from when you heard the complaints to respond very quickly. So thank you so much. And also, um, I'm excited to have our students back on campus. More importantly, seeing our students and staff back uh was really exciting last week. I know that it was a busy summer, but it was great to see, particularly at the middle school, how excited the students that took, took part in the Maker Camp were to share their different creations with their principals. And I speak to you as a proud mom. I know that unprompted by me, my son couldn't wait to show his pinball machine to Principal Bill at the beginning of the school year. So I know that that camp was really successful and just wanted to thank all of our summer school staff for all of the great programming that there's been at all our at all of our different campuses. I also wanted to take some time to welcome our two new student directors that are here. I'm so excited to have you join us. Uh, you know, for me, it's so important that our school board really reflects the communities that we represent. So having you here um is incredibly meaningful. It shows us that, you know, we are elected here to make decisions for you, to make a functional school district for our students and to keep, you know, our decisions really focused on our students. So having you here as partners is really, really exciting for me, and I look forward to getting to know you, to hearing our discussion. And um, I look forward to you guys pushing us, pushing us to do better for our students. So thank you, and I can't wait to hear your comments tonight and welcome you colleagues.
Who's ready? Who's next? Director Shinoski?
That's why you were voluntold this time.
Why isn't Director Brown ever, you know, voluntold? All right. Um, I also want to welcome everyone back and I want to um welcome our new uh student directors. I look forward to getting to know you better this year and working with you. Um, I also want to thank um all of the staff, the teachers, the administration, uh, the classified staff who worked hard all summer and really got things ready to go uh this fall. My own family, I have a sixth grader and a ninth grader, and I was so just pleased dropping off my kids and things went so well. So um, I hope that everyone had that experience. And I just want to thank all the staff again. I'd also like to thank the speakers tonight for coming out. Um, I'm always really grateful to hear uh the perspectives of the public, so please keep doing that. Um, I will be starting office hours again uh at Casa Latina on the second Thursday of every month uh from three to five, so please come and visit me. And I'll email that to you as well, Liz. And um, if that doesn't work for you, please reach out and let me know. Um, I want to thank the community, especially Councilmember Terry Taplin, Vice Mayor um Ben Bartlett, and Councilmember Sophie Han for partnering with me for a fundraiser for the Junior Jackets. Uh, those of you that don't know, the Junior Jackets is a crime prevention program for youth in Berkeley. And it's been around a long time and we don't always talk about it and we don't always see the work that they do. But it's really important work in disrupting violence in our community. And we had twelve kids that didn't have enough, um, didn't have the funds to participate. And together, the four of us, we were able with the community to raise enough money for all of those kids to participate in the Junior Jackets program. So I just want to thank everyone who uh donated. And if you didn't hear about it yet, um, let me know and I'll give you the link. And um, we're still accepting donations, so we can uh make sure that next year, everybody can participate as well. I want to thank um the students um and advocates who worked on the Mental Health Resource Guide. As uh someone who was a survivor of um, a close family member, my mother um took her life by suicide. It's work that's really important to me and I'm really grateful. And I will commit to doing all I can to ensure that we get those um guy, those handbooks out into families and students' hands. And I'm hoping that the student directors can help me to navigate that and do that. Um, I also want to recommit um to um working with the superintendent and the other board members to ensure that we're not scheduling graduation on us, on the Jewish Sabbath this year. So I would like to make that commitment. And that's it. Welcome back to my board colleagues. I look forward to another great year.
Thank you, Director Brown.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much. Uh, thank you to everyone who spoke to us in regards uh to Berkeley High graduations and um those who spoke to us tonight in regards to the Junior Jackets, black male representation at our school sites, the Harbor Way commute stipend, uh mental health, Sinveo Mendez renovation, personnel issues, and the Oxford site. Um, as many of our board directors shared this evening, we appreciate uh hearing your advocacy on these issues, uh not just in our inbox, but also here in person. So thank you for taking time out of your schedule to uh inform us and make us aware uh of these challenges that we're having in our district, as well as sharing uh opportunities for solutions with those. Uh, to everyone else, welcome back to all of our students, to our faculty, our staff, our family, and our community members. We are beyond happy that school is back in session and that you all are here at our board meeting. Um, summer is a fantastic time to really rest, relax, rejuvenate, reflect. But it is also a time to plan ahead and to prepare for what is to come. And for many of our scholars in the district, the summer meant preparing for a new seat in one of our beautiful classrooms or preparing uh for our graduates specifically, preparing for a new seat in a lecture hall or somewhere in your workspace. No matter what you are planning or preparing for, please know that we are very excited for you, that we support you, and that we are rooting for you in this academic year. For our staff, for our educators, our staff and our faculty across the district, thank you for all of the work that you did over the summer to prepare to receive our scholars. To our families, tag, we are it. And we take uh full responsibility and rise to the occasion of enabling and inspiring our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to our world. I'd like to say welcome and hello to our brand-new student board directors. I'm happy to have you all here. I've seen you throughout our school communities advocating at Berkeley High, advocating on behalf of B-Tech. And so it's exciting to join you uh on this dais and exciting, exciting to have your advocacy here and have you all as representatives of our schools. So welcome to my fellow colleagues. It is great to see you all. Some of you I haven't seen in months, so it's good to see your faces and happy to um be reunited with you all as we get ready to dive deep and get ready to start it on this fabulous work that we have for this academic school year. Um, I want the community to know that while uh you all were enjoying your summer vacations, relaxing and rejuvenating, many of your board members uh were very hard at work. You've heard uh from Director Shinoski as well as uh President Babett and Vice President Vasudev about some of the events that they've been connected to this summer. But I also want to bring your attention to the work that we did this summer in preparation for policy work. Um, I'm joined on the policy committee with by, with President Babett. Um, and we spent a considerable amount of time this summer along with our superintendent, associate superintendent, um Title IX Director, uh as well as various uh members of our, of our district staff uh working on policies that will absolutely make the difference in our school communities. And so I'd like to bring your attention uh to a, a board policy that is agendized tonight on consent. That's Board Policy five-one-four-five uh dot one-one. And that's the Board Policy on Questioning and Apprehension uh by Law Enforcement. And the reason I'd like to draw your attention to this uh is because I'd like to give space to recognize a student in our school community who spoke to us uh as a policy committee about the challenges that he saw at his school site and wanted to ensure that these challenges weren't experienced or felt by any other students. And it is because of his advocacy and his work, as well as his family, uh that we were able to reach this board policy and bring it to the board uh this evening. And so I'd like to give an appreciation and thanks, thanks to our staff as well as to this amazing advocate who, who worked very hard on it. And although he is not here with us today, I'm hoping that either he or his wonderful mother or his grandmother are watching. So if you could just join me in giving him a round of applause. In addition to the board policy agendized on consent, I'd last, like to also uh bring your attention to three board policy and four administrative regulations uh item that are agendized tonight for information. Um, and like to thank the board for their ongoing support uh of these board policy items as we will see them agendized for consent next, next meeting. Thank you, President Babett, for sending my comments.
Thank you. And now it is our pleasure to welcome our uh new student director. Uh, we're going to start with, I know their first names, I gotta make sure I get the last name, Director Dell.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Janai Dell. I am representative of Berkeley Technology Academy. I appreciate all the members on the school board. I feel very welcomed here. All the love, I feel it. Um, I'm here to learn and I'm here to bring forth the needs for my school. I'm also here to work with our other school board, our student, school board member, you know, to connect and, you know, bring both. our other school board, our student, school board member, you know, to connect and, you know, bring both problems forth. So that's it. It's small, but I'm really here just to learn and to see, you know, but thank you.
Thank you. And now we will hear from Director Lyle.
Hi, everybody. My name is Caitlin and I'm currently senior at Berkeley High. Thank you all for being here tonight, both in person and online. And thank you all for making me feel so welcome and, you know, showing me the reins. I'm really excited to be serving as Berkeley High's Student Representative this school year, and I really look forward to working with all of you to continue to better our schools. My main goal this year is to just ensure that Berkeley High continues to become a more safe and supportive environment for all students academically, mentally and physically. Title IX and mental health are, I really want to emphasize those especially. And I really hope to connect my peers with the board, bring forth their voices and make sure that students from all demographics are highlighted on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you both for stepping up to the plate and being willing to join in to all of these long discussions with us every other week. Now we will hear from our superintendent.
So good evening, everyone. I have a lot to say, so get ready. Talk about long. First, I want to welcome our two new student board directors. It was a pleasure to meet you all the other day and so excited to sit here with you on the dais to do things amazing for the students of Berkeley Unified School District. And I also want to welcome the Berkeley community to the 2324 school year. So there is nothing like the first day or the first weeks of school. And I would say that at Berkeley, they are particularly special. I've told this story now in many different settings, but I don't care. I'm going to tell it again. The first day of school, I had the pleasure of going to Washington Elementary School. I'm sorry, King Middle School and was in, I went to Washington too. That's why I was confused. But went to King for this example and had a group of students, six graders, who told me that we did good. And they were specifically talking about, we did a good job at selecting Wednesday for the first day of school. They had had a class debate and decided that Wednesday was the best day to start the school year off. And I happened to walk in. And so I was excited to start off my week knowing that as the superintendent of Berkeley Unified in collaboration with our educators and our staff, that we actually did something good. But I want you to know that we actually did a lot of good this year and I saw examples and heard direct feedback from you and from others around the good that we have done this school year. Want to share some of that good with you because this is not always the place where good is shared. This fall, we implemented our new middle grades assignment system and it's been a multi-year effort that was really with the intent of really lifting our value of diversity here in Berkeley Unified and making sure that our middle schools reflect the diversity of our community in the same ways that our elementary schools do. So we were excited to actually implement it this year officially. And it was so nice to see our sixth graders starting excuse me, across our three middle schools, meeting and greeting new friends. And I'm excited to see all the amazing things that they're going to do together with this, in their new diverse, more diverse communities. We also are excited to share, I think President Babid mentioned it, that we opened our school year providing extended learning services to over 1,600 of our babies in our Bears and Learns Program. And those are our before and after school programs. Our Bears Program, which provides academic support and enrichment and recreation activities, opened at capacity, fully staffed and at capacity. We know that we still have a number of families who are interested in our Learns Program and there is still a waiting list. And it is important for those families, for all of our families to know that for that particular program, our Learns Program, there is a verification requirement to enroll our students and we have to prioritize our spaces for students in specific groups. Those are students who are experiencing home insecurity, our students who are identified as foster youth, as well as students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So we are excited to continue to enroll students and take them off the waiting list as space becomes available. We want to make sure we're clear that we do have to prioritize those student groups for that particular program. We're also excited for all the ways that our before and after school programs will not just offer enrichment to our students, but also really support and build on their literacy and math skills. As I was visiting sites this week, I also had a chance to experience and taste the mac and cheese. Can I tell you about that mac and cheese? It was real, it was good. Anyway, that's not the good news. The good news, that is the good news, that was good. But the other good news is that for the first time in five years, going back pre-pandemic, BUSD's Nutrition Services Department is fully staffed. We opened up our kitchens and our cafeterias fully staffed. And more good news is that BUSD continues to offer free breakfast and lunch to all of our students. That said, I still want to remind and encourage all of our families to complete, despite your income, to complete the free and reduced meals application this year and every year. These are really important forms. So even though we're given and you're getting free food, these forms really allow our district to receive critical funding for specific families and it actually allows for many families to get eligibility and access to a number of other programs outside of free meals. So please, you likely have received that in your registration form. If not, you can go to our district website to complete that form. But again, we're encouraging all families to fill out the free meal application. I want to also thank our wonderful OFI staff and our community partners, including Berkeley Public Schools Funds, Covenant Church, SupplyBank.org and 12. We were able to distribute well over 1,000 bags and backpacks filled with school supplies on August 12th. We also gave out many, many, many Chromebooks because we are technologically savvy and advanced here in BUSD. Now, we had a whole bunch of good news, but we also of course have places that we can improve and do better. We had a few transportation issues this week, over the first couple of weeks, sorry. And I really want to just thank our parents and our caregivers for your patience as we continue to work to place some remaining students on our bus routes and also as we deal with shortages with our bus drivers. The team in our transportation department has been amazing. They've put in tons of extra hours to mitigate and address some of the issues as well as to expedite process and to respond to family concerns. And we're really proud to be able to provide transportation to our students here in BUSD. And we want to be honest that our transportation is still limited. And so we have to prioritize our students who are in our special education programs as well as those who are attending our district served programs. And so we are accommodating as many families as we can, but wanted to just acknowledge that that has been an area of focus for us over the last couple of weeks. That said, transportation, we were excited to launch our first middle school bus to Longfellow with much success. And we've implemented some new software that's really going to help us be more efficient with our transportation needs. Finally, finally, I want to thank our students and families. I was supposed to get excited because I was about to be finished. I want to thank our students and families. You motivate us to do this good work and you also inspire and push us to do better. I want to thank our educators, teachers, school and central office staff and leaders for all that you did to make open, opening our schools a success, for all that you did to welcome our BUSD community to the 2324 school year. This year will surely be filled with a whole bunch of good, with many areas of focus, but I truly believe that working together, we can make this not just a year of good, but a year of great for BUSD. And I'm excited to do it in partnership. Thank you, President.
Thank you. And thank you again for all of the hard work and all of those brilliant highlights that we were able to bring forth to the community and more importantly, to our students and families. Now I need a motion to approve our consent calendar. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Director Brown and seconded by Vice President Vasadev. We traditionally would call the roll, but now that our board secretary is back, she's like, you really don't have to do that. We could just say all in favor, aye. So we will do that going forward. All in favor? Aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you have to say to the mic so it goes on the record, Director Shnaski?
Aye.
Okay, so it has been approved unanimously. Now we will move towards our only discussion item. Yay. Invite you, Director Carles, to the.
Thank you. Good evening, board directors. President, sorry. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight. So tonight's presentation, first, I'm joined by my colleague Jennifer Gibb from Van Pelt Construction Services. Jennifer Gibb is really an expert on the 7-Eleven process. She helped guide and facilitate the statutory requirement. So I asked her to come here tonight, really because the goal of tonight is to sort of help to begin the conversation that the board has to have publicly in regards to the surplus or disposition of this property. You may remember that last year, the board actually received the 7-Eleven Committee's recommendation. And at this point, the hope is to begin the conversation. So next slide, please. So the agenda for this evening is really about the post-student occupancy, the timeline of activities regarding 1130 Oxford Street. We will briefly discuss the appraisal regarding that property, surplus property options, discussion by the board, and then recommendations for next steps to the board. Next slide. So what you see here is the timeline. In August of 22, this came before the governing board to really form that 7-Eleven Committee and begin the process. And then we took that through, do you recall how many meetings? Was it seven public meetings? It was either five or seven public meetings where the 7-Eleven Committee received the data, but then also discussed that in a public setting and really tried to digest what their recommendation or recommendations in this case was. Next slide. So on the appraisal, and I know there's been some questions from community and some, from some board members. So we wanted to touch on this again, as far as the appraised value versus appraised value of just what it might be if you were selling your home. This is a public property and it does appraise differently. We've gone through this with Hillside as well. The appraiser that we use, Yovino Young Incorporated, they're really one of the leaders in the Bay Area in regards to appraisals, particularly around public property. There was some comments and questions that I have received over the summer of can we work with the city? Can we rezone it? Can we reappraise it? The short answer is yes, but I'm not sure how we do that. And what I mean by that is it might require the demolition of those buildings for that to be rezoned. I honestly don't know. It's something that we can explore, but in order to rezone that to where it's a resident, we're set up for residential lots, I don't believe we can have school buildings on it. So it's something that we can research a little bit more. But currently the valuation, what it shows is roughly $2 million. This aligns with the valuation of Hillside that was sold several years ago when we consider what the sale of Hillside was for versus the years, the difference, the, the different costs and economic value and whatnot. There was no income or cost approach given to this since it is a unique property, as a public property. And the market impact value may change based on market conditions, obviously. Next slide. So surplus options, what the board was presented with the recommendations from the 7-Eleven Committee. And then we also, excuse me, the board was presented with the recommendations from the 7-Eleven Committee. And then what I presented the board with was really what your options are. So the options are the sale of the property, the lease of the property, redevelopment, such as workforce housing that we heard some of our community partners talk about, a land exchange, or we often refer to it as a land swap with the city or other government agency that may have land that's more desirable for us and they might have an interest in that property or other partnership opportunities. There's one piece that I do want to make mention of that I've mentioned to this board several times when we've discussed this and it's around state funding in regards to the school facility program. Each year, we have to fill out a form with the Office of Public School Construction that does declare surplus sites. Up until this point, the site was not surplus. Technically, it was empty. But moving forward, we can only leave it undeclared for so long. In the last five years since I've joined Berkeley, under the school facility program, we've captured $34 million in state funding for facilities. Currently, we have another $30 to $35 million potentially sitting in the queue for future projects. The way that the regulations work is once we declare surplus and we sit on surplus, we can no longer tap into those funds. And I say that not to sway the board, but it is an important piece of information for the board to consider when discussing what to do with this property. So sale of property, the opportunities obviously are to generate some revenue, release of liability, development of community asset. But also, and I did leave it off and I apologize, but it's really capturing the state funding that I just discussed. Challenges, unknown next use, zoning for future, et cetera. Next slide. So if we lease the property, we can generate revenue. We can repurpose of, of the facilities and the space. The challenge is, is the liability of the property. The, I believe several of you were on the board when the decision was made. Most of you are not, but the property was closed because of the landslide defamation report that we received. So there is liability there. There's zoning considerations. The financial implications is really about what I've mentioned in regards to the OPSC funding, but also the financial implications of maintaining and continuing to maintain the site and then potentially CEQA challenges. Next slide. And actually, I'll apologize real quick because we always talk in acronyms, but CEQA is the California Environmental Quality Act for those at home who might not know. So redevelopment, land exchange, land swap, other partnerships and opportunities. There's cost sharing, which is an opportunity, as well as the optimized land use. Challenges, again, we might have some zoning considerations. I know we can work with our city partners around that. Liability of property, environmental concerns, which plays to CEQA. Funding, legal complexities, really about joint use and anything surrounding joint use. Financial implications, and lastly, the overarching CEQA. Next slide, please. Actually, that is our last. So at this point, what myself and Ms. Gibb would like to do is really answer any questions that the board might have, but more importantly, help foster that conversation.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this detailed presentation. I have a couple of questions I'd like to start with and then I will ask for other comments from my board colleagues. Can you define what sitting on surplus actually means? Does that mean if we're not, if we haven't put it up for sale, is that considered sitting on surplus? Like what does sitting on surplus actually mean? And then secondly, we've heard that we had to evacuate Oxford because there were evacuation issues that children would face in the midst of an emergency. Can you just update all of us on, on that specific issue? And then thirdly, did we have anyone who was actually still interested in doing kind of the workforce housing opportunity that we're doing with Berkeley Adult School?
I'm going to try to remember all the questions. I'm sorry. I didn't bring a pen and paper up here. So the first question was in regards to what it means to sit on surplus property. And it's really now that the board had elected to move forward with the 7-Eleven process, which we've done and the recommendation has been made, the board has to decide, is this truly surplus or could it be used again for a school site? Once it's declared surplus and no longer used as an active school site, that's when we're supposed to be reporting it as surplus property. The second question, I believe, was in regards to the evacuation.
I'm sorry. So when you say we have declared it as surplus, just because we had the 7-Eleven made that declaration?
Once you have declared it a surplus. So the board has not made a decision. The board received the 7-Eleven's suggestions, right? Because they were an advisory committee, but the board has not taken action to declare it a surplus site yet.
So technically, is there a time limit between we have to, when we have to make that declaration?
I'll look to my colleague. I don't know that there is, but I, I don't, I don't know that there is a time limit, but I don't know that if we sit on it for too long, what attention that might draw by the state. So, and that's, that's just a very fair answer. There's nothing in the statute that I'm aware of that says you have to make this decision in 45 days or 180 days, but I don't know how long we could, we could, the board could choose to not declare it surplus before it begins to raise questions by the Office of Public School Construction.
Okay, it would help if we find out that information because obviously we don't want to use, lose the ability of $30 million in funding.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
The second question was in regards to evacuation and obviously I don't want to spread the doomsday fears, right? But what the landslide defamation report was very clear and articulating in the executive summary was that while the building over the years has actually, the buildings have performed very well. What we saw was there was movement of roughly seven feet of the entire campus based on satellite imagery. I believe it was over a 35-year period or a 25-year period. While the buildings have performed, the greater risk is really about ingress and egress. And the ingress is for the emergency service vehicles and the first responders. And the egress is about getting And the egress is about getting our students and staff out. Additionally, the concerns were because many of the homes up there above Oxford are wood construction and they are also built on the Keith Avenue landslide. Not too far off of the fault. If there was a large landslide, all of those homes, all of the cars, the roadways, et cetera, would actually become sliding down towards the school. So it could lead to a condition where students and staff become trapped. It could also lead to a condition where we can't get first responders up there to take care of our students and staff. So for that decision, the prior board had made the decision to close the school.
Okay, and then as you answered the question around people interested in workforce housing, how do those same conditions? Impact that decision?
So it's really about liability for the board. So if the board were to choose to ask us to explore, to put workforce housing up there. We are assuming some liability with that. And there's also the piece of the board. BUSD's board has publicly acknowledged that it was not safe to keep students and staff out. So when we say that to then potentially move our workforce or any workforce up there. And put them potentially in the same condition can prove to be problematic. Again, the problem was not with the buildings. The buildings themselves have performed very well. DSA standards, the Division of State Architecture are very strict and very stringent compared to all other building standards. And Oxford is really a testament as to that it works. When we consider how much that campus has moved over the years and that there's very little cracking or very little destruction to the property, those standards do work. The fear is really more about what can come down towards the campus and getting everyone out of the campus.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll open the floor to other colleagues.
Director Vice President Vasdev. Yeah, thank you so much, Director Kalis, for your presentation. I just have a couple of questions. Did you ever talk to the city about like the timeline to rezon? Because I know that that can be very lengthy. Like, do you have an idea of how long the timeline would be to rezon? And the second question is question one. And the second question is, I, you know, attended the meeting with the D five neighbors and I know that this issue of a land swap. Was something that they wanted to, the district to look into. Were there any conversations with the city about what a land swap could be? Could this potentially be used for, I know some of the neighbors proposed like a park site? Were there any discussions with the city about any alternatives?
Yeah, so we have not investigated the possibility of timing around rezoning. Only because it's not something that we've, really, we need to have the conversation with the board. We needed this conversation first to understand what the board's direction would be. Or what direction the board might want to go in. In regards to land swap, there's actually, this is the first I've ever heard that there is interest from the city or possible interest, I should say.
It was neighbors, not the city.
Thank you for clarifying. So, yeah, so I've had several discussions with the city in regards to the possibility of other land swaps within the district or within the city itself. And the Oxford property has not come up.
Okay, and but were there other workforce housing developers? That we are in partnership with or nonprofit organizations that may be interested in that? Because for the Berkeley Adult School, right, the way it's working. Is we've given the developers the land and we really don't have liability for. The what happens with the property or the tenants and all of those other issues, right? We gave guidance on how you can qualify to live in that space, right?
So it's actually that's it's it's something that we're still working on with that particular developer. For the workforce housing, what we've done is we haven't given away the land. We've issued a ninety nine year land lease to the developer for $1, in which they develop, maintain. And basically offer this housing to our workforce. Now with that, what they had to do is they're working under the state regulations of the Affordable Housing Act. And they're also working with the district and with the labor partners to really develop some rules around governance, the pieces that you're talking about. That's still in the works. It's 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 a heavy lift, but it is nearing completion. Once that's done, that governance suggestions will actually come to the board for approval. And really what that does is it allows the board to make sure that while the board is not in the business of being landlords, right? That your workforce is protected and treated fairly with dignity in that workforce housing. In regards to the liability, as long as the property is owned and operated by the workforce housing developer, there is no liability on the district. However, one of the big pieces is really around governance. Once the governance contracts are adopted and signed, that governance has to be upheld. And what that means is that it would be advisable, and this is another conversation, but I'll bring it here now. Is that we would create an over or the board would create an oversight committee to really look at the books, so to speak, to make sure that the governance is done in accordance with the contract. If at any point in the way our land contract is written, if at any point the governance is violated so many times within such period. The land developer would actually be forfeiting that property and the school board would then own it. So for that reason, even from a facilities perspective of building, we have construction managers that will oversee the project to not only ensure the safety of our staff while they live there. But also to protect the potential investment of BUSD because there is potential for BUSD to own this, should there be a default on the land contract. So in, I'm sorry?
The default on the dollar?
No, a default on the on the governance. No, not on the dollar. Well, that right, the governance is part of that contract. So in regards to your question though about are there other developers who might want to develop that site? So when we initially studied the workforce housing at one site, that study was a very heavy lift and it took close to two years to do. If the board would like to direct staff time to start to study that, it's something that we absolutely can do. But it's not something that we have because we've never considered that to be a, let me rephrase, the former board had never considered that to be a viable site or workforce housing. For numerous reasons, such as some that was discussed by the community tonight, really particular to the location of the site. Additionally, it could be a bit premature in the sense of while. What what we know from the surveys that we've issued and what we've known just even from talking to our staff within BUSD is there is a lot of interest in workforce housing. And while the AMI was raised up to a hundred and twenty percent and the rent is based off of income for the entire household, et cetera. The rents are still higher because of where they're located here in Berkeley, right? So with that, until we know what the true participation rate is for workforce housing, once it opens in twenty six over at the adult school. To consider building more could be a bit premature in the sense of there's always a possibility, not one that's expected. But there's always a possibility that you don't get participation for the hundred and ten units that we're already building.
Excellent. Thank you for finalizing my question. Director Shenaski?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I understand a few things, especially after talking with neighbors about some of their ideas for how we can use the property. One is just a little bit more on the workforce. Housing option is my understanding is that what? One of the things that made the adult school so ideal for that project was that the city of Berkeley had money to invest in the project. And so it made it viable, even, you know, where it is, which is much, you know, more accessible and, right? So that's correct, right? And we don't have that option now because the funding from the city that we used for that adult school workforce housing, that was it. That was the end of that funding stream. Is that correct?
It is correct. Both the city and the taxpayers were incredibly generous with measure O funding. In which we received roughly thirty point four million dollars for that eighty eight million dollar project. Without that, there's no way Berkeley Unified could have built, could have embarked on this endeavor to build workforce housing.
Okay, great. And then I also, as I'm looking for, looking through all of the various options. To me, the thing as a school board director that sticks out is the liability associated with that site. And I know that that there are voices that really want us to take on that liability. But I don't think that it's very responsible of us to do that. I think the reports have been made really clear and, you know, if the site was to be sold. Or leased, that people are very clear on what the risks and liabilities are. Would you agree with that assessment?
I would. The the reports that were done were done by Alan Crop and Associates, which is really the leader for the entire Bay Area and state and landslide deformation. Those reports were reviewed and actually fully concurred with by several seismologists out of Cal. So we really did make sure to hire like the who's who, if you will. That their approach, their study and their findings, there was very little opportunity for it to be questioned. Just because of the validity of their knowledge and their past experience.
Great. And if I may, I have one last. So I can just keep yammering on all night. All right. So my last question is, for me as a school board director, I'm really thinking about this in terms of how do we best benefit our district? And ensure that we are using our resources in the interest of the community that we serve, you know, within our schools. And my understanding is that if we were to surplus the property, that would be $2 million that would go into the general fund for us to use directly for students. And also that the folks that would have the first sort of right to that property would be the city of Berkeley or other public entities. So it's not like the property would just automatically go out to the, you know, highest bidder. There would be a preferential. The the public entities would be preferred in the sale of that property. Is that correct? So there is the opportunity to do all these creative, wonderful things, right, with a partnership. It would just not necessarily need to be the school district and we would be freeing up some of those resources for our classrooms and for our kids.
Two questions there, the way I heard it, right? So the first is regards to regarding the proceeds of the sale and then it would go back into the general fund. The short answer to that is maybe. So basically, the way the law is written, that money is actually supposed to go back to the capital building fund, Fund Twenty One Facilities. However, we can petition CDE to allow us to put that into a special fund to be used for various projects. That's what we did with the site of Hillside. And when I talk about various projects, I'm not talking about facilities projects. I'm talking about one time spending efforts that the district has to do in support of teaching and learning. So that might, that money might not go into the classroom to buy the whiteboard markers or to buy the pens and paper that our students need. But it will absolutely go towards the one time funding that Assistant Superintendent Fowlesby is always challenged with. How do we fund this, right? This is something, this is a need that the district has. We really shouldn't take this money out of our classrooms. Where do we get the money from? So we can do that and we've been successful in doing that in the past. The second piece is in of your question, as I understood it, was really about giving preference to city sale or other government agencies. The short answer is yes. The board gets to make that determination. The board can say, we want to sell for full market value, push it, right? Do everything we can to get the highest dollar. Let's sell it to the highest bidder. Or let's really look to our community. Let's look to our partners. Let's look to the city. Let's look to the county. Let's give them the first opportunity. So that's really at the discretion of the board. As I hear the way that you've spoken about it, Director Shenaski, as well as some of your colleagues, I would imagine that would be the route that you would want to take. Again, that's not my decision to make, but you do have that authority.
I just want to thank you for all your work and I also really want to thank all the neighbors just one more time because it has helped me immensely to understand the issue. You know, more deeply and more thoroughly. And I I really am looking at this from the perspective of what is our fiduciary responsibility? And where should we really be focusing our energy and resources? So thank you.
And if I may, real quick, I actually want to offer that same thanks to the neighbors. The one who talked about even the alarm going off, unfortunately, when the the vandals went in, they ripped out wires where, yeah, it sounded an audible there. It never dialed out. So we didn't know the alarm was going off. Now, since that, not only has it been repaired, but steel cages have been installed, things like that, so they can't do that again. But the old saying of whether we're talking about taking care of and raising one child or taking care of an empty building up on the hill, it takes a village, right? And it is through the partnership of our neighbors that we have that. We do get a lot of phone calls. We do talk to our neighbors up there and I appreciate the fact that they do watch the building and they let us know of issues that arise.
Thank you. And maybe we could post on our website for people, because one of the callers said she didn't actually know who to contact. If she noticed something happening at the property.
So if I'm not mistaken, it is posted on the facilities page, but I will double check that.
Okay, great. Perfect.
Yes, at first I I would also like to thank you. Join you and your thanks to the community, both Director Shenaski and Executive Director Kalis. Because, you know, our community members definitely make the difference for us, give us some perspectives that we may not always hear as board members. You know, just directly speaking to staff. And so they have been advocates and have been tapped in, not just this year, but since my earliest remembrance of these conversations, which was in twenty seventeen. And so I'd like to say thank you to those advocates. I do have a couple of questions specifically in regards to our surplus option to sale. Thank you, Director Shenaski, for bringing up the or raising the question in regards to a city getting first dibs on purchasing the property if they'd like to. Director Kalis, could you tell us how many conversations you've had with the city in regards to their interest or if you've had any conversations?
No, and I I apologize. I I don't think I was clear on that one before. So we've spoken with the city regarding some other properties. But there's been no interest stated by the city in the Oxford property itself. So we have not blatantly asked them, hey, do you want to buy it? But there's been no indication from them. They want to sell that. And the reason that we facilities haven't asked that question is because really we're not supposed to have those conversations. Until the board makes a decision as to what they would like to do with the property. We've facilities has been contacted by a couple of private agencies, including a private school. That has expressed interest in, hey, can we come look at it? We want to buy it. We want to put a private school there. And unfortunately, right now, I have to tell them I can't even bring them in there. And the reason for that is primarily because once the board makes the decision to do that and we go through the bidding process, if I had brought that other company in there. And given them the opportunity to preview the site ahead of everyone else, it becomes a conflict of interest, right? They have an unfair bidding advantage that someone else might not have.
And I can completely understand that. It almost puts us in a difficult or tight position, especially if those those of us on the dice are moving towards selling them. Selling of the property, but in wanting to ensure that it stays in the city without knowing their interest. They've even expressed that they're interested in purchasing it. It makes it hard for us to kind of make that decision. So I know that you were looking for direction from us tonight, but I'd absolutely need to, well, you need to know a little bit more. Additionally, I would like to raise the concern and join those who have concerns in regards to. The. The sale of the property and how much we would receive at two point.
Two, roughly two billion dollars.
Two million dollars. Can you speak to those who have had comments around how low that seems?
Yeah.
Especially during in in this economy. If you don't mind speaking to that.
Absolutely, but I do want to clarify real quick. So I'm not seeking action from the board at this point in time. I'll gladly receive some direction to the board as to next steps that you might ask me to take or to investigate or to bring back to the board.
I'm sorry, I thought I said direction. Did I say action?
Yeah, so at least that's what I believe I heard. So I just want to make sure you, we're not looking for any action. It's really just about facilitating this conversation. In regards to the value, again, it's because it is a public property. It is a public property with a school on it. So it is appraised completely differently than what someone would come out and appraise your home for. Or an empty parcel of land that you have that's zoned for residential. This is a property that has two large buildings on it of schools. It's not, it does not appraise the same. There's very strict regulations for the appraisers on how they do this based on the square footage. Again, we could investigate the costs of actually tearing down these buildings and doing demolition, having it rezoned. My my instinct tells me that with the cost of demolition and the fact that that would still be a public work school project. That it would likely be a break even scenario. That being said, that's just a knee jerk instinct. It's not anything that I've run on paper yet, so I can't tell you that for sure.
Just to further clarify, so if we were to demolish the building. Why would we then need to rezone it to get a higher appraisal value? If it was demolished, that wouldn't then trigger it to have the same potential as the neighbors' home valuations?
So potentially, yes. But again, as I've said in the beginning of this, I'm, that's what you're. I'm, that's what you're, the questions that you're asking are very specific to real estate development. And it's not something that facilities for school districts typically does. So I would have to do some more homework on that to answer that question with any certainty.
Understood. Um, do you have any comments you'd like to add to this conversation before I try to open the floor for us to give some direction?
No, thank you, President Babbitt.
Okay, great. So what I've heard in summary is that we, uh, in general have a consensus to understand what the city's interest would or would not be in, uh, buying this property, correct? And if we say the city, are we also, also, um, willing to ask the county as another public agency?
Well.
Uh, you can speak into the mic. We can just talk, please.
When I read it, my memory serves, it's any public agency. So it could also be the Park Service. I, I don't know how you solicit that information, but I think the first, the first dibs, so to speak, goes to public entities, but that doesn't just have to be the city.
Okay, so Park.
But I, I'm not an expert on that, so I'm not sure if I'm recalling that correctly or not.
So I apologize. I'd love to tell you, I just didn't hear you, but I was having a side conversation. Can I ask you to repeat the question?
I was saying, it was my recollection when I was reading through all the documentation that the first right for purchase would go to any public entity. It's not just the city. It could also be the Parks Department. It could be the state of California. It, it's any public entity. Is that correct?
That is correct. If the board chooses to do that, instead of just opening it to the highest bid, yes.
Okay. Um, and then our second, um, I think deeper understanding that we need to understand is how the Hillside sale happened. None of us were on the board at that time and kind of, you know, I remember being able to spend the money, but I don't remember how we went through obtaining it, right? So if we could kind of get a recap on just that whole process.
So it was the same process that we followed here. The district, and it predates me as well, but the district had established a 711 committee per statutory requirement. The 711 committee made the recommendation to surplus and sell the property. The board did that, um, put it on the market and it, it was sold. There wasn't a whole lot else around it. I do believe the city was engaged with that. But again, it definitely predates me, so I can't tell you that for sure.
Right, but we should have the information. And, and who was it sold to?
Uh, Hillside property was sold to a private owner, uh, who has developed the property for his own use.
Okay. And I'm just wondering if, did they do any kind of demolition to get the best price? You know, like, it doesn't sound like they did based on how much they got.
No, and I can tell you that a property similar in size that we actually considered for demolition several years ago. And we looked at cost at that point in time. And this was, I believe, two and a half years ago, two and a half to three years ago. We were looking at roughly between three and a half and $4 million for demolition of the property.
I mean, that just seems very like I can help you.
Uh, we can do something on the weekend, perhaps. We'll get everybody out. We're, we're going to violate some cupka regulations, but if you don't tell neither will I, okay? So.
Do you listen to this?
But, but, but seriously, I would like to see if we could get an actual estimate because going from $36 a square foot to potentially $800 to $900 a square foot is a huge impact.
Of course.
Right? So it may be worth the $3 million bucks if that's what it costs. If we're going to increase the property value to, you know, 800 to 900 a square foot.
And that's the direction that I'm hoping to get from the board tonight is really for what you would like us to study to bring back to the board for more further consideration.
And, and so I think I'm just asking for a consensus on just understanding better what the demolishing would do to increase the price. Or do we have a consensus for that?
I want that you also are including the rezoning, right?
Well, this is step two. So I'm just doing separate. So with the city, I was assuming the rezoning would also happen, but we can do that as a step three.
Okay.
What the rezoning means, because I'm also thinking that this is something that the two by two may be able to get further, discussion in depth with the city because at, at those meetings, you know, the key people are required to come and attend. Um, so I was going to ask my colleagues, would, would you all like us to further take this up at this two by two committee as well?
Or does it go to facilities first? Would it not go to, would it be more appropriate for facilities?
Well, we're talking about finding out the city's interests, so that's the only reason.
And that was our, our original step one. And so what Director Kalis expressed to us um, is that we cannot engage in that conversation um, with the city on, from that district standpoint. Uh, at least that's what I heard you say.
We can engage with private, private, inter-private parties who are interested in buying it.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is my question to you was how, if you've engaged with the city on this thing, I thought your response was to that question.
No, no, no. So let me clarify. What I said was I have not only because the board has given me no direction to do so.
And then you followed up by saying, we also can engage.
Specifically as to the developers who have reached out, as well as the private school that has reached out and expressed interest in touring the site. Since those are private agencies, I cannot give them any, any base, any head look of the property prior to the board listing it for sale.
Okay. And so to your point of Director Babbitt, I think that it would be uh, in our best interest to defer this to the two by two, to have the discussion in regards to the city's interest in the sale of the property.
Yes, and we can give further direction to have those conversations begin. And we will follow up on those conversations and dig into the details through the two by two.
Have the conversations begin on behalf of the district and then dig, dig deeper with two by two.
Yes. Is that? That's a fascinating line, yes.
I would like to add though, in addition to just finding out about, um, increasing the revenues that would come in, the amount of time that it will take from our staff and, and resources that will go into making that happen. Uh, cause I think that's a, an important consideration as well. I'm, I'm really worried with all. I want to know, so I think item number two was to find out whether there are ways to make the revenues larger from the sale of the property. And I think along with just knowing if there are ways to do that, I would like to know how much, what kind of resources would go in to figuring that out. Because my concern is we have a lot of projects on the table that we want to do, these modernization projects. And we have a whole list of, of projects. And so I don't want to take resources or time away from those projects that we already have prioritized. So I'd just like to get a sense of what the time would be.
It does. I, it's not a question that I can answer right at this moment. I'm sorry.
I was trying to add.
Right. Yeah, and that we're, we're taking notes as to that, so that we can come back to the board with these answers.
Okay, and then the rezoning option. Um, I guess I can follow up with the city conversations with the two by two. And, um, just looking at all my notes. Oh, and we talked about understanding what our, what our, um, workforce housing demand may or may not be. And I'm just wondering if we could talk to our labor partners, just so it's on the table and we can say definitively that our educators are not interested in taking that risk. Because, you know, there are several people who live in that neighborhood happily. So I think we could at least ask our labor partners to, if, if they're willing to do a survey, you know, to say, is there any interest or demand from our educators in workforce housing there? Given, given the understanding that it's on an earthquake fault.
And would you be interested, just so I'm clear, would there be interest in doing that prior to an actual feasibility study? Only because as Director Shinoski pointed out,
Yes.
we were able to do the other with the city money, right? We don't have money earmarked for workforce housing. So would we still want to do that type of a survey in advance of doing a feasibility study to understand what we can build, how much it would cost, and ultimately how we would fund that?
Well, I think the survey is free.
No, 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 I understand the survey is.
Oh, so I don't, I don't think I can ask for a feasibility study without understanding what, what is the actual interest.
Okay.
But that's all my point was.
Okay.
Um, and again, who knows what will happen with the city conversations, right? I, I don't know. I don't know if there are other nonprofits who are willing to step to the plate. We've gotten emails that there are nonprofits that are interested. But it doesn't matter if there's no demand from our educators, right? And I just want to confirm that.
Okay. And anyone else have any final comments or thoughts on this discussion? Go ahead and say it. I just, I'm, I'm so sorry to be the, um, Debbie down here, but I just really want to caution us uh, in thinking about potentially using this or even considering the liability of using this for workforce housing. Um, we've learned since 2017 and John, I'm sure since longer about the liability of the property. Um, and so I, I just don't think that that is a feasible idea for us. Um, and I, I don't think that that is a good direction to move in. And when we think about capacity of staff and we think about projects, if this is not something that we are seriously considering moving forward with as a district, I don't, I don't think it would be in our best interest to consider it deeper. That's my opinion.
Well, I guess my question, I, what I thought I heard about liability is, the liability is not the districts. Our liability is in the governance of the property. I didn't hear that our liability was in the development or in potentially what happens. Like if it burns up on the Berkeley Adult School, for example, that's not the district's liability. It's only our liability if we default on the governance. That's what I thought I heard.
So that is correct, but I think the other piece to consider, just to be very blunt about it, is that liability is something that the district always worries about as well as exposure. But there's also the piece that, as I mentioned earlier, the governing board had made the decision that this site was not safe for the lists, for the reasons that I listed, to send our students to and to ask our staff to work at. So to consider, and again, I'm not swayed one way or another, but to consider then building workforce housing on that same site to send our staff to live at, it does raise questions as to the validity of why it was closed in the beginning.
Absolutely. And a place doesn't just become safe if we decide to put adults rather than children on the camp, on, on the campus. And so I, I, I disagree wholeheartedly. And I don't, I don't think that we should move forward or even consider workforce housing at that site.
Well, I, I, again, I just feel like we should at least have a data point of what our actual educators would choose for life. That's all I'm saying. That's all.
Don't we have an assessment of the, um, desire of staff for workforce housing that was done for the adult school?
Several, yes.
Right. So, and my, if my recollection, if my memory serves me, I thought that the adult school, we felt like that really did, you know, serve the needs of what we had found from our staff. And the other thing I'm just a little confused about is my understanding is the reason that the liability at the adult school is the way that it is is because of the way that that project all came together. So it's not necessarily true that a workforce development project at Oxford would come together in the same way and have the same liability considerations. But I, I just want to make sure I understood it correctly.
Our liability and exposure is limited at the adult school because of the structure of the way that we built the contract. Obviously, when we build contracts, we always try to limit any liability or exposure for the district. But we're talking about a very different piece of land, right? That's, it's just geographically, the challenges that it poses compared to building on San Pablo is very much different, is very different. So with that, I can't tell you for sure what that contract at the end could potentially look like, nor what any developer would be willing to agree to.
Well, it sounds like you've kind of answered my question, given we should have some data already from our educators on if they chose, if they would have preferred the Oxford location over the Berkeley Adult School location. I joined the board very much at the end of that process.
Can I just ask a clarifying question real quick? And I'm sorry, because I, I thought I heard you say if they would have preferred, are you suggesting switching the housing to?
No.
Okay, thank you. I, I just, I want to make sure.
If they would have opted into a apartment or a condo or whatever it is, they would have opted to living quarters at the Berkeley, at the Oxford site.
Understood, thank you.
And thank you, Director Shinoski, for bringing it up. Uh, your memory does serve you correctly. In those surveys, there, uh, was an option to, there, our teachers or educators rather, were given options or different places around our district that could be an option for workforce housing. And so it wasn't just the Berkeley Adult School, uh, that was picked, but it was picked because of a series of surveys that answered those questions as you all are speaking to. Um, and in addition to that, the previous board did give the direction um, to look at, um, the Berkeley Adult School for workforce housing, knowing that we had, we already knew about having Oxford, uh, in our backyard in our situation with Oxford. But that consideration wasn't made for the same reason that we decided to move our students off of a campus. And so to your point, Director Babbitt, I'm sorry, Vice President Babbitt, it has already been looked at. The surveys have already been done and we should already have that information as well as the direction that was provided by the previous board.
So if you could just re-bring that data point to light. Um, because I think it would help for our community who is continually saying, you know, what about staffing it with educators for, for them to also know that our educators have not chosen that site as a preference.
Yes, so, but just to be clear, it was, as Director Brown pointed out, it was not offered by the board as a potential site for workforce housing. So I can bring you the data. But in those surveys, the three sites that were considered were, uh, San Pablo at the adult school, were here at the West Campus, and were the parking lot former tennis courts of VHS at Millvia Street, the previous board.
Doesn't exist. Got it.
I'm sorry.
I was saying, so then that data doesn't exist. There's not a survey already alive and well that.
Not in regards to the Oxford Street property, no.
Well, my recollection was a little bit, I was focused on something slightly different, and that was that the interest that was gauged by that survey was met by the building of the workforce housing project at the adult school. So we sort of are fulfilling the need that was identified and then some. It, it, that's what I was referring to.
So it sounds like you're saying there's not a greater demand that we need to feel beyond the Berkeley Adult School.
That's, that was my understanding.
That's her understanding.
Not one was identified. So there was obviously a little bit of a higher demand or a higher interest, I would say, um, than the 110 units that we're building. But I don't remember that number being significant, which is why I had mentioned earlier that really, as we get closer to breaking ground and to building and the governance is established, which not only sets the rules of governance, but it also sets the rules of how long can someone live there? What happens if they leave their job? All those questions that have to be answered. Once those are answered and the board adopts that, then you can get a true sense of what your participation rate would be in workforce housing. Because if we're building 110 units and we have an 80% participation rate, it begs the question, why? If we show 180% participation rate with a huge waiting list, then there is a need.
Okay, thank you. I think I can, um, accomplish the same goal through the two by two uh, process. Just in understanding, even if it's not workforce housing, does the city want to use it for maintenance workers or other city employees that as the community has put forth? Uh, Superintendent?
Well, you've, you've already wrapped up that section. I was just going to say, what we've been doing is taking notes on, um, some of the next steps and the inquiries that you all have with the hopes of.
some of the next steps and the inquiries that you all have with the hopes of helping you make informed decision. And so what we can do, uh, President Babett, is to show you what we do have in terms of surveys, in terms of information from the previous assessments around workforce housing to see if those respond to your 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 questions. And if not, we can figure out what the next steps are. So I wrote it down, but then I just heard you bring it to a close, so that's why I wasn't gonna speak. Um, but you know, our job really is, and that's what we're doing, is to take notes, because we really want to make sure that when you do make the decision, um, you feel uh that you have all the information that you need to do so.
Yeah, I I just want to echo something really quickly that Director Shinoski said. I in if this does come to the two by two, I I want to be sure that we're not creating a lot of additional workforce facilities right now. It's a really busy time of the year. Um, so Superintendent, if you feel that that you need more time or that this is, you know, that you're balancing a lot of priorities, please do let the board know so that you know, we can have that discussion when it's most convenient for facilities.
My last question is just in an attempt to continue to keep the community informed, do we have an idea for when this will come back to us for a either another discussion or a vote so that folks can plan?
So at this moment, I won't give you one, but we will update the board to let the community know. What I'm gonna have to do is sit down and go through the list of requests from the board with my colleagues to figure out how long it's going to take to put all of it together.
And just to reiterate, as long as we haven't declared a surplus, I I really our real financial obligation right now is just to maintain a vacant property, keep it safe and keep it from uh being vandalized and destroying the neighborhood with like maintenance issues and all those other things that.
That's correct, and we do have viability with the property sitting empty, obviously. Maintenance has put in um over a hundred and fifty work hours up there in the last week. Um, they've applied extruded metal everywhere that they could to cover windows. They've replaced broken windows. They've actually had to take to the practice now of boarding up within windows, which we did not want to do just because of the appearance and what it could potentially do to property values, a boarded up building as opposed to one protected with extruding metal. But it was a problem of actually getting the materials and getting it up there quick enough. We've spent, um, I believe the last ticket was twenty three thousand dollars to actually rewire the fire alarm that was completely ripped out by a vandal, or all the wires were ripped out, et cetera. So we'll continue to do these things as long as we have the property. But it is obviously, and I say this just to impress upon the board, the board will bring the information back that you've request requested. But we really, it is important to continue this conversation because it is it is an ongoing expense and liability for the district.
And also in the two by two or in conversations with the city, if we could um make sure we get a commitment for more surveillance support from our police department, if that's possible. That would be helpful.
Prompted another question for me. Um, I also wonder if delaying this decision and and getting more information also leaves us open to liability if something happens with the property with respect to the reports that we know exist. And that's my other concern. I mean, we keep seeing all these disasters happening, and that's another concern that I have about not making a decision with that site.
It it does, like any property owner, whether you're it's a private property owned or an agency, right? The liability and the exposure of the property falls on you. If the property is in a landslide deformation area such as this, the risk of something terribly going wrong, something catastrophic is higher. But it's also higher when it's a vacant site and it's been identified by vandals.
Okay, thank you all so much. Uh, we can now.
Thank you.
Close this discussion item. Thank you for coming and thank you for all of your detailed information and support. Um, again, we have our follow-up, we have our information items, uh, fourteen. Please do let the superintendent know if you have any questions or concerns, or if any of these items need to come back to the policy committee before we are able to um, have your consent. And at this time, I will open the floor for any extended public comment. If you are online or in the audience and would like to speak, um, please come forward. Uh, we're gonna do um three minutes. I only see two people, so three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, guys, um, board, superintendent, new um board members. My name's Nimitz Bina, and um I just wanted to extend some praise to the educators at Longfellow. They have been incredible with their communication, their welcomingness. My son loves Longfellow. The I was a little saddened to learn about the bus via um Berkeley side rather than from you guys. And then the communication they're following. I I'd like to have a call back from transportation about if that's an option for my son. Um, cuz it would take back the hour and a hour that I'm driving every day back and forth to Longfellow. I also would just like to ask all of you guys if we could, if the board and the U S D could do a better job communicating. Over the summer, I've had a chance to talk to different community members and different um people at Longfellow and um it seems like the communication uh hasn't been done very well with the um with the district with all different kinds of renovation projects. And I watched the videos from every um discussion, conversation about renovation, except for Sylvia Mendez. Um, and it just seems like there could be better communication on when you plan meetings, community input. I would say BAM would be a perfect example, having a community discussion meeting on the night of their open house. Seems a little bit like you wouldn't have a lot of involvement. And then um it was brought to my attention that the May tenth um Longfellow discussion um was done on a a day that um many Hispanic people celebrate Mother's Day, so that just seemed like a little bit of poor planning. And I really want to ask you guys to consider keeping the natural grass at Longfellow. I know that's not popular with a lot of people, but are I'll just finish, I'll just finish my sentence. Um the petition has increased over the summer and um I believe it will continue to increase. Um, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. And now we will receive Mr. Todd Andrew, who is online. Mr. Andrew, we will receive you now.
Oh, thank you. I got um a panelist versus non-panelist and then unmute versus unmute a screen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, President Babett and uh fellow board members. I just wanted to ask, is it possible to make a comment on the eleven thirty Oxford site or has that time passed?
It's possible. We we will receive you now. You have three minutes.
Okay, I won't take anywhere near that. I just want you to lean into housing on this site. Geotechnical issues uh can be resolved with various means, uh, one of which is volume and forty housing units on that site. Uh, could be perfectly accommodated, even given the issues there. Uh, one developer friend has told me that site's probably worth eleven million dollars uh if forty units are contemplated. Um, and goodness knows, we need housing in the city, particularly if it's for educator and workforce housing. So I want you to lean into, if you can, please, whatever decisions you can make. Uh, whatever emphasis and and influence you can exercise toward housing on the site. My district with, I'm in District Five. I live in on Hopkins at Monterey. And uh, we are severely underdeveloped with regard to housing in our district versus the rest of the city. And I just want you to please lean into housing in my district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have an opportunity for extended board member comments. Since it's so early, I know everybody wants to talk, right? No? Oh, sorry, we have another hand. I will ask to promote uh Mr. Deep Marlerins.
Hello, I I just have a quick follow-up on the Oxford side, you know, having been the vice chair of the committee. Uh, following the discussion, it is surprising that in the discussion, nobody talked about uh A B twenty-two ninety-five. Instead, there was all these questions, rezoning, how does it work? How does it not work? The whole point of A B twenty-two ninety-five is that you do not have to resort. You can do forty units by right. And uh, I also found some of the um characterizations about the slide zone uh somewhat biased, you know, like because it's not that the entire hillside would tumble down and land on that side. It's a slow-moving slide, and I don't want to, you know, like, uh, kind of uh uh kind of underestimate that. It's not an easy site to build, but that's why it's essentially worthless as a two million dollars. It's priced into the property that it's a challenging site. And my point is, it should be a public entity that uh conducts proper stewardship and develops it responsibly, as opposed to somehow handing it off to a private developer. I think, you know, the the district and the city of Berkeley owns that owes that to the citizens and the taxpayers, uh, you know, who supported this side and 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 this side served the 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 citizens well, and there can be positive uses. So I would just encourage you to look at the site with a the glasses half-full mentality. And not just hide behind, oh, we can't do it, we can't do this. You can do it, you just have to look into it more thoroughly. And uh, you know, the uh the risk assessment over that, if you take that to its logical consequence, say you can't live there. A-again, the main concern was the evacuation of hundreds of children whose parents are panicking to pick them up when the roads are not passable. It's a very, very different scenario. If you put ten fourplexes there, it's completely different. And you know, if if the site and the surrounding were in such a problematic condition, the logical consequence would, the city would have to evacuate the entire hillside buy out people and relocate them and turn it into a conservation easement for mountain lines to roll. So there is kind of an in-between ground, and I think it's too early to close the doors on this. You know, you have to, I I think it would be, you know, interesting to invite, for example, Alan Crop, who authored that study and have really expert witness on it. This whole discussion struck me as just being way too shallow given the depth that the analysis that has already gone into it, both from the uh geotechnical assessment as well as zoning issues. We are actually much further along than the than the discussion tonight implied. So please, you know, a deeper look into this uh before you close the door on the options, but this could bring to the city of Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you, and that concludes our first school board meeting of the school year. Meeting is adjourned.